And, um, any adjustments to the agenda? Very simple agenda for the board, a budget meeting. Any communications and public comments?
It's the budget meeting, right?
Correct.
It's the budget meeting.
Good luck.
All right, thank you. Um, so let's go right into discussion.
All right, um, I will pass these around. And I should have changed the heading, the budget cuts are in there. That's what they originally said, and then I went in and fixed them. So yeah, and this is what our actuals are.
Cross out the before budget cuts, okay?
Yeah.
So this is where?
I just noticed that and know if I had made the budget cuts.
So you've done our work already?
So that's for this year, not for next. But if you flip over the actuals to that, there's a comparison of what you budgeted versus what we actually have today. And then, um, the contingency for the non-union staff raises is in there. And you all are 26,000 to book, so salaries, huh? Um, I don't know if there are extras or not. I usually only do them for the board because there are all the salaries that's fixed up. But you're welcome to them. But yeah, I wasn't thinking we'd have visitors, so. Um, but yeah, basically, um, what we budgeted on and versus what we actually hired, then we ended up with a little bit of money left over versus sometimes we plan on a certain budget, but then when the actuals come in, um, new hires and whatever, we end up being over. And it's just a starting point to see where we're gonna be. Not only for this year's budget, but for next.
So, we are, I'm just gonna remind myself what all this means. We've just finished and received, uh, was it at our last school board meeting? Or our WNESU meeting? The completed budget for the end of June 30.
Correct.
And that turned out a little better for us than we had anticipated, but still a deficit.
Yes.
We are in this year that you're pointing out right now,
Yeah.
2018, um, which we can glean some information from, including that the salaries are a little less than
What we had expected, yeah.
What we had anticipated we budgeted. But we're budgeting for the year beginning July 1 next summer.
Correct.
And, um, one question I have is we finished last year, I think, what was it? A hundred and some odd thousand dollars deficit, is that right?
I think it was down to seventy something.
Seventy.
I think it was seventy something. We were expecting three hundred, but it was down in the seventies.
Seventies. So that deficit, we need to, um, figure, uh, let's see, how do we take care of that deficit? Does that just automatically go?
Usually we build it into the budget we're building now.
We're building right now.
So we'll have to make up for that deficit.
Yeah.
Um, we don't have to do it all in one year. But we do have to do it within three years. But yes, we've gotta make up for that deficit that we had last year. And usually it gets rolled into the next year, and I will roll it in. But once we get further along in the process, um, you all may decide that you don't really want to do this in one year. And you choose to do it neither to it or depending on how the package.
I'm just not fully clear on how it's been done in the past. I had asked a former superintendent about that. And could you just explain what our precedence has been for how it's been?
Um, you, this is probably the largest deficit you've had since I've been here. Um, and through no fault of anyone's, it just was additional, um, secondary costs. But, um, in the past, small deficits have always rolled right into the next year's budget as an expense. And that way you budget for it, you tax for it. And then by the end, by next July, we will have had the money to take care of last June's deficit. So we're moving forward with point blank.
So Edie said last year's deficit was because of, is it tuitions?
That was the tuition students.
To middle school?
Yes.
Okay.
We had a lot of unexpected movements and probably a lot to do with people really being aware that choice exists now with Act 46 discussions. And we just didn't anticipate that many kids.
How many kids last year were unanticipated for?
Um, do you remember Doug?
Yeah, it was like twenty. Um, I would have to pull up the notes from last year to
Yeah, I think
be a little more precise, but.
That sounds about right. Um, and I think we ended up with thirty some odd, if I'm correct.
Sorry, I'll pull it up if you wanna carry on. Sorry. Usually we have between fifty and sixty, seventh and eighth graders. And we had budgeted, I believe, for mid-fifties or something like that. And it wound up being
Okay.
A lot more than that.
I'm probably thinking of one of the other schools.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, um, we thought we had plenty in there in comparison to past year.
I actually have a friend who rents a house here in Weston. They, that friend had a renter come in just with her two middle of, middle school age kids because she wanted to have their education covered.
And I wouldn't be surprised if, you know, more, as the Act 46 continues to move forward and who knows what it's gonna look like once the state makes their final decisions, that you have these non-operational school districts and the school districts that have school choice, you'd see more people moving into the community just to take advantage of the school choice and that the non-operational's and the, you know, some of the towns do have. So it's something we should anticipate when we're budgeting.
Rick, Rick won a cheese sampler and they
Do not just pay for
A nonprofit. But some, some people were hoping you weren't gonna come. I wanted maybe to take a step back and ask you, Doug, or Chris, for two things. One is, how do you anticipate? Do you have any suggestions for how our budget meeting should go this fall? And also any initial thoughts about putting together that?
Yeah, I met with Edie earlier today and we were looking at last year's timeline. And a lot, you know, some of the discussion that Edie and I had revolved around, so much of it relies on the numbers that don't come out until around December. But a lot of times, all the work that's done beforehand is almost you gotta throw it out the window and start over again because it's hard to anticipate. And I know with everything going on with the state and what we're looking at there is looking at a way that to save people time in regards to the amount of time we're budgeting. So what I proposed to Edie and wanted to talk to the boards about was, we know that we're going into a negotiations year. And anticipating that, um, you know, this is the last year that we have to negotiate health insurance. So we're looking at, you know, an eighty-twenty is probably as generous as the state's gonna get with the health insurance. So we can, I would say, kinda anticipate what, you know, negotiation, what that's gonna be with health insurance, because it's only gonna be for another year. And then on top of that, based on, um, you know, what the, you know, the average steps have been with salary increases and stuff, anywhere between, you know, around the state, anywhere between one point five and two point five or three. And so, once Edie gets the information back from the principals in regards to staffing and supplies and building needs, is to build a budget based on the numbers that we know and ain't gonna change, they're not gonna really change all that much. And hopefully, it might save the board some work in regards to trying to figure out where the state's coming from. And I think we'll be pretty close in regards to when the numbers come out in December 7th, because it's my experience that with all the work that's done, you're still within point four, point five percent of where the state is. But all that work that went into, you know, the twelve meetings prior to the December 7th, you know, it's, sometimes it's just, you know, a lot of frustrating work. And, you know, right now, we, we have a lot of the information we need. And like Edie and I were discussing, I said, we don't have as much control over the budgets as we used to, even seven, six years ago, where we could get into it and have all these meetings because we controlled, the smaller the budget, the less we have control over, you know, what we're, we're doing with it. So I think, um, maybe, you know, seeing what, cut back on budget meetings because I think between the information that the principals are gonna get to Edie by the end of this month, is that right? The end of this month? This month, hopefully, and next month, we'll be able to give you a solid idea what the budget looks like, so you can really get into it then.
And Doug, did you have any budget thoughts at this point? Do you, do you have any idea what enrollment will be like?
Sure.
Last year versus this year versus this coming year that we're budgeting for?
As far as middle school students or just total enrollment?
Total and middle.
I don't know, I don't, I haven't talked with Molly yet about the projected kindergarten incoming class, although last year that was somewhat inaccurate by a measure of like six kids, which isn't a lot, except for when you reduce six kids out of small classes already, it kind of puts us in a weird spot. The, I anticipate like staffing levels will pretty much remain the same as we go up. We currently have a first grade class that has twenty-one, and tomorrow we'll have twenty-two students in it. They started out at eighteen last year, you know, when they were the ones we consolidated, so.
That's how big the kindergarten class is right now?
Sorry, I'm not speaking clearly. So last year when we did the budgeting process, we looked to cut a teacher in order to kinda make it make sense. And because the kindergarten class of last year was very small, so we combined them into one first grade class, which started out in our budgeting plans as eighteen, is now gonna be twenty-two tomorrow, so. Anyway, so that's there, you know, and like, you know, it's something we can kind of play with and flex with. Right now, we have one kid, one first grade teacher, two kindergarten teachers. We have nineteen kindergarten kids, so it's like those classes are, you know, give or take three kids, but have a very different level of staffing there. So there's discussion there, but like, I would, I would suppose that we can keep that static unless we're running up against big increases or something like that. Need to make something drastic, just because that first grade, you know, that K through two literacy time is so important and, you know, having, having the attention that makes sense. Other than that, the classes are all pretty healthy sizes. We have the, currently we're budgeting for fifty-nine seventh and eighth graders. That's what we have budgeted, we're right around fifty-four, although we're flirting with fifty-five, fifty-six, you know, depending on paperwork coming back in. The current sixth grade class has thirty-four students in it right now. And I can write all this out for the next time with me, so it's, I'm not just saying things. But has thirty-four students enrolled in our school? But we also know there's, there's probably at least another five that are enrolled in, like the grammar school or Hilltop or other things that just, like, they're not in our system, but kind of on our radar, that will need to be budgeted for the following year. Which is a slight issue because, well, it's not an issue, it's just a slight thing to bear in mind when we're planning, that the current eighth grader, so classes twenty, twenty-three, there's twenty-five that we're currently funding. So it's like just a bump of, well, nine kids.
At least.
That we know of at least, right, so.
The same, I'm sorry, I didn't, you got it, I didn't.
So like, middle school, like you kinda like, the kids who are leaving, there's gonna be twenty-five kids that are accounted for right now leaving. And there's, we're anticipating thirty-four plus going in.
Thirty-nine or forty or something like that coming?
Right, uh, correct. You know, so obviously the total number that we budget for will increase by ten or so relatively. Again, those are really soft numbers without calling out to the other schools and seeing who's enrolled and who they anticipate coming to us for tuition money next year.
Okay, um, any more thoughts?
I think, one, I think I remember last year, Doug, you're taking kind of a first cut at some things with respect to the budget. And based on how closely you have worked with it this year and managed to kind of handle reducing costs in the face of the potential deficit we were looking at, I wondered what, what's your preferred way to approach it this year?
Well, I think what Mr. Pryor was saying about, like, the things that he was saying that I need to turn into Edie are a lot of things that I, what you might call like controllable expenses, like things like, you know, instructional supplies and those sorts of things. So I think, you know, plugging those in and then being able to talk about like, okay, this is what we anticipate, you know, and just kind of keeping it, I would anticipate keeping it somewhat level, given like the situation we're in. It would be nice not to have to reduce anymore, because we did cut a lot out from last year that we were kind of used to having, particularly professional development and just another things, kind of trying to shave those down to make the overall line more appetizing. But, you know, like at least as far as the first stab, to kind of go and see what that looks like.
And, uh, right now the kindergarten has nineteen kids.
Correct.
And we, you really don't know at this point how many preschoolers will be becoming in the darkness.
Um, I don't, I mean, Molly has like the database kind of up and running, but it's, and I'll consult with her because the database kind of lists kids that we heard about being born, you know, five years ago or something like that, and like trying to track through. The preschool numbers will give us some solid numbers, but that's obviously not the full percentage. So we have, you know, and those numbers are just starting to come in requisition wise, like the kids that we pay preschool tuition for. Those kids you can kind of bank on, you know, coming next year. But I just, I don't know those, I'm just to quote those right now.
Are there any, do any of us anticipate any sort of structural changes or big changes that would impact the budget in a good way next year? Like changes to, uh, capital improvement items? Or changes to studio Y or, um, anything of that nature? New programming, program, programming of any sort?
No, I mean, I don't anticipate anything right off the bat that would be significant.
I just, I mean, I, I just, what Chris was saying, I think is true. Is we plan these meetings starting really early, and then we largely sit around and kind of look at each other for the first three or four or five of them, and try to sound like we're doing something, but we don't really have numbers to work with and waiting for these counts. And it feels pretty not productive. And Chris has also said, like, that there's so little we really control. You know, I mean, we can go through the budget and say, why is this number, you know, way higher than what we budgeted for, and we need to think about what that was. Or maybe there's, you know, something here, there, small spending thing. But we've been under extremely constrained budgets here and everywhere for many years. So it's not like we're gonna suddenly get together and say, well, let's buy an old watch for every teacher or something, or buy a new, you know, Bobcat so we can drive it around. There's not gonna be a lot of new expenditures, we're always looking to keep it tight for the taxpayers, you know? So it's, you know, they're gonna come up with a budget, it looks like this budget with maybe a few little things that we need to look at. And so I think the more we wait, the more efficient we'll be, personally.
Yeah, I mean, I agree, so long as we don't, as a board, have, um, new initiatives that we have some bearing, that we wanna make sure get involved in budget. And I'm not sure that we do this year. So what can we, what are the next steps? What can we do to, uh,
I think with the information you have in front of us, you know, at least the board can start taking a look at it. And in the past, for me, I've had boards saying, looking forward, we could, you know, look at the different scenarios we're usually up against. And that's, what would the budget look like if we kept it level funded? And that's tough to do when you're looking at health insurance. Beyond health insurance, you level fund as much as possible. What would it be if we were to cut two percent? And what would be, you know, I think those two scenarios sometimes gets us in that right frame of mind for, you know, hope for the best, playing for the worst kind of situation. And, but at least we're all looking through it in the same lens in regards to the budget. I mean, this, we all know, the smaller the budget, the more difficult it is to, you know, if you gotta make cuts, it's, there's really nothing there to, you know, cut back on. You know, we can nickel and dime the supplies and the, and everything like that. But in the big picture, the impact it makes on instruction and the money that you're saving to the cent isn't gonna be that big. So, I mean, I guess it all depends on the direction that the board wants to take to advise the administration as what they're looking from now until the next time we meet. You know, do you want the administration to look at what it would look like, keeping it level? Minus the increase, possible increases for insurance? And do you wanna look at budget, what it looks like if you were to take two percent, which is equivalent to X dollars off of that? So you know the impact a small percent could make on your budget?
Sense about that? I, uh, we haven't, uh, I think, you know, more or less level funding is probably an appropriate way to be thinking about it, I would say. I don't, we didn't, we haven't gone through a period where we, it's, the budget has been turned down by the town or, you know, had some sort of, like, the town is, seems to be fairly happy with the value it gets for the money that it sends to education.
One of the things that I think would be helpful, but I'm open to others not agreeing, is to have a more, a little more detailed understanding of where we ended last year. And to have a better understanding of where you actually made cuts. When I go through this and I see where we overspent and where we underspent, it doesn't all make sense to me. And I think to understand it more clearly would allow us to have a better handle on what a level budget would be for next, for next year. And just, and I don't know if you're prepared to do that now, but I'd like to ask for that at another meeting. You know, because we, I made this comment at the last meeting, we can see an eleven thousand dollar savings in professional development. There was a comment made that maybe the supervisory union is helping kind of make up for that for our, our teachers. The overspending and capital improvements, those are just two, two examples. When you go through it line for line, it, I, I don't think we can replicate a budget with that kind of disparity in various places. I think we need to have a better understanding of where they came, where the ups and the downs came from. Does that, but that may just be me.
No, they're all over the place, to be honest. And I don't think that we would probably, we would probably start with this year's budget, not try to replicate, um, last year's. Because you're right, it's all over the place, the revenues, expenditures. So I think I would start with this year's, and I'd start with enrollment and look at class sizes and make sure that we don't need additional staff. And then, um, the other stuff is minimal, the supplies and materials unless there's any big building thing that's looming, which I don't think there is. Most of your budget is salary and benefit. But yeah, I, I wouldn't try to use last year's as a model, I would. Because there were a lot of cuts there that probably weren't beneficial, but they were made to try to keep the taxpayers from having a three hundred thousand dollar deficit. So I think I'd use this year's budget as a kind of a starting point. But we can certainly go through that.
As far as we're spending, we have a fiduciary responsibility. We need to understand what did happen. I'm not saying to develop the, the new budget based on last year, but I do wanna understand where we, where
Well, I know, Doug, all of a sudden, when we knew where we were gonna end up, you know, people weren't buying things. They were trying to make do with what they already had. And, and, you know, he wasn't doing the professional development that he wanted to do. And, um, yeah, a lot of things got put on hold that may have not been the best idea, but, you know, trying to save the taxpayers from, you know, huge deficits.
Which we fully appreciate, yeah.
Yeah, no, it was, he did an awesome job. But yeah, he watched everything that came through to him and made decisions accordingly. And with the full knowledge he needed to save money, so.
So Edie, I had a question. Do the boards usually get for that, for the districts that are school choice, do they usually get what they're spending in, um, for school choice students that go outside? Compared to, you know, tuition rates for where all their paying, so they can see exactly how much money's going out and how much percentage of that is taken up in the budget? So I'm sure that the tuitions are probably a large percent of the budget, it's probably right next to salaries and benefits, so.
A good share of their students go to private schools, so it's a state average. But we could certainly develop something that shows everybody's tuition.
I just was thinking, look, taking a look at it, and with the overall, if the overall, you know, ninety percent of the budget is made up of salary, benefits, and tuition, gets an idea of exactly what we're, you know, looking for the other ten percent where, you know, where the spending is.
Okay.
We can, we can talk more.
I know, um, we put notes in the budget, one more word on it, so it says what we're paying. But yeah, as far as a separate sheet on, you know, this is what each school district's charging, we have not done that.
The closest we do is when we do the, in the town report, when we report out.
Yes.
Where we kind of like, like, you know, we have three kids at grammar school, we have, you know, two kids at Putney, et cetera.
And I think what you're, you're saying, Chris, is just sort of divvying up the whole budget. And I think what you're, you're saying, Chris, is just sort of divvying up the whole budget into teacher salaries, uh, tuition.
And then everything else.
And then everything else.
Yeah, 'cause, you know, what we'll probably see is probably ninety to ninety-five percent of the budget is made up of the, the things we can't touch. And I think that's, you know, good for the, for the taxpayers to, to see that, that you are being very fiscally responsible in regards to the money. And you only control five percent of the budget. Everything else, you know, in our current situation is, you know, how we have to, you know, pay for it.
And I, I, um, that's, we can't control it in the current system that we've chosen to do.
Right.
We, we could say, all right, we're no longer gonna be choice. We could say, all right, we're gonna have the highest numbers of students per class of any school district in the state. We could, you know, we could change our, our priorities significantly if we wanted to. And we could, you know, have control in that, that sort of way. But given how, the system that we've got in place.
Right, the current, under the current model system and stuff. You know, you know, in order to, you know, make decisions, I mean, you really gotta look at where all the money's going. And then, you know, whether people want the information, at least we have it to give it. To say, well, I mean, 'cause, you know, you have some towns, you know, when being around and knowing where, you know, Act forty-six has been and stuff, there's a lot of anxieties around what's gonna take place, whether it's here or anywhere else. And so a lot of towns are looking, okay, um, what some of the town's public has been asking for, what are we spending in total tuitions? And what we would be spending if we didn't have school choice? Is there a significant dollar amount of savings if we, for instance, here, if the kids went to Bellas Falls versus going up to all these places? I'm not saying to advocate for either one. I'm just saying there are different models that the, the town could say, let's, let's, let's look at. Or they'd be very fine, you know, just find the way things are. But, you know, looking at the big picture, like you say, there are different models. But right now, we're just working within the current model we have and to see what it looks like.
There, there's another category, I've got two thoughts at once, but there's another category in the, in the middle school, the middle school kids, which is special ed costs, which, um, used to, you know, have gone through a different permutations and who's gonna be covering what and so on. But at this point, I believe the town covers the special ed costs for the seventh and eighth graders, those who incur the special ed costs. Is that right? And the SU, uh, the, the special ed costs are covered for the elementary school kids and the high school kids, but not...
Not the choice.
Not for the choice.
Yeah, the choi- and, and that changed a little bit in one seventy-three.
Thank you, Ryan.
That will change something in one seventy-three. In what that, what that lives, because the way the, it's formulated out now, it's not, you know, the money can be used not just for kids on IEPs, but now, when the, you know, we, the, the school will get a bill for the special ed. If the costs exceed, you can get another bill for, you know, if the kids go into that school. And now the special ed costs where they're at that private or independent, or private independent school exceed, you know, in the one seventy-three, I believe, what I was reading the other day, is they can get a further bill for the sending district for any, any cost for that special ed student that were above and beyond the tuition.
Now, the one seventy-three, I think, for those of us who, who are catching up with what it means, is, um, a conversion from what we currently, uh, get state help for special ed, um, costs and on a per need, on a as-needed basis, I believe.
Yeah, it's switching from a reimbursement model to a census-based model.
A census-based or block grant.
Yep.
Regardless of whether you, uh, at this point, regardless of whether you have, are in a high need area or a not-high-need area, or a poverty area or not, it would be based on the census. Over, over, I gather, a transition period of a couple of years.
Yeah, based on like a two or three-year average. Both.
So that'll be a big change that will be fully in effect by...
It'd be fully effect by twenty twenty-one.
Twenty twenty-one.
The implementation will start in twenty twenty-one and be fully under effect by twenty twenty-five.
So, in the immediate budget, the, the special ed costs at this point are, can, can vary drastically year by year by year, depending on the individuals, individual kids going through seventh, eighth grade and what their needs are. And the, and that, at this point, is covered by the town as opposed to being kind of covered by the SU and having the effect, uh, not completely washed out, but because some kids are, are very expensive and some kids not so. But it, it can have a sort of drastic impact on, on budget. So that, that's also information that we must...
Yeah, 'cause the, the reimbursement rate has gone down. And, you know, in FY nineteen, it would be sixty percent of special education expenditures. So, I mean, that's gone down from, what was it before?
It was fifty. So anyone who hit the fifty, and we had several kids, we had several kids last year that hit just over fifty. So we were able to get money back, but now they aren't gonna hit the sixty.
Doesn't kick in for much. It'll wait till sixty before it kicks in.
Before it kicks in at all.
Mm-hmm. So there's more of a cost to the district now under one seventy-three.
Absolutely.
And, and that, that, if, if you hit sixty before and now coming up, I mean, fifty before and now coming up sixty thousand, the state would then cover half that or what did it cover?
Or no?
Um, I think it still said it, oh, well, no, they changed it.
The reimbursement rate is set at sixty percent.
Sixty percent.
Yeah, in two thousand nineteen, it would be sixty percent. It used to be like seventy-two or seventy-three.
Ninety.
Ninety, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it's, they've really cut that.
Yeah, it's gone fifty to ninety.
Okay, um, I've just been thinking about, uh, sort of the schedule of information coming in, sort of what you were talking about, right? And when during the course of the fall, we'll get this information and therefore, when does it make sense to be thinking about making decisions? So, um, enrollment figures, when are we gonna have enrollment figures for next year?
As, as far as kindergarten?
Yeah, as far as kindergarten, as far as seventh and eighth grade?
Um, I mean, the seventh and eighth grade, I could have the estimates, you know, early, the most accurate estimates that we can have, that will continue to change, but, you know, I can have those by the next time. Whenever that is, 'cause it's really just a process of reaching out to the local schools and feeling that out and then adding a couple more. Preschool, I did pull up a preschool, preschool data list and I don't know, I can have Molly go over this, um, you know, and again, these are really loose, you know, uh, science here. But, um, I mean, currently, they're looking at thirty-two kids that are known about, but they may not all still, um, yeah, like be here, be intending to go to kindergarten. So that's a little bit messier, but, um, we can have the rough numbers by next time, but.
So within, in two weeks, you think, oh, we could have enrollment information?
Yeah, I think we could. I mean, as good as we'll have by...
I'm just gonna jot down some names. So, so that would be October fifteen or somewhere close to there. Um, staffing levels, when, when, when would we have information about what we are gonna need for staffing levels? It's very connected to the enrollment, but.
It is, yeah. I mean, I, again, I think that based, once you have the enrollment numbers, you would have the, the staffing levels.
So kind of the same data.
Yeah, I won't have, you know, we won't really know how retirements and people, women are coming in or out, shake out by then, but.
Yeah, okay. Um, salaries and benefits, when, when do we know, that's, that's after teaching negotiations.
Yeah, you know, so, and I think that's, you know, speaking with Edie, I mean, all the stuff that you're talking about, now we're hoping by the end of October, salary, benefits, you know, ratios, teachers, all that will be built into the, the budget that you see. It'll give us a good idea. But like I said before, I think we're looking between, you know, anywhere between one point five and two point five to thirty is like average for the state in regards to increases in salaries. Um, and the insurance, right now, we're at eighty, twenty. I don't anticipate, you know, how we can do any better than that because I have, you know, you know, negotiating, I, you know, look out for the teachers as well, saying, you know, they get a re, you know, the board could say, okay, we'll do better than that, but the following year, when the state's going, you're not getting any better than eighty, twenty, that's gonna have a huge impact in their, in their salaries. So we, you know, so we gotta balance that out. So I see, you know, we're working on the budget with Edie, we're gonna stick with the eighty, twenty. And, you know, anywhere between one point five to two point five.
And the negotiations themselves, and when we actually know, it's sort of an undetermined date, but probably sometime during the winter.
Yeah, the, the, actually, I got a letter from the, um, the union that they wanna start negotiations, um, in November. And so that'll be on the next SU agenda so we can, so I can get direction from the board and how you want me to move forward with negotiations. I meet with them monthly anyways, so.
So that's an unknown, an unknown, but just point to, but we can make an educated guess.
Yeah, I think we're, we'd be pretty close on making up.
Um, the WNESU budget?
That, Edie, would we talk, we talked about that earlier?
We've thought at the next SU meeting, we would have, um, an idea on the salaries and then, um, hopefully, we can start getting, 'cause it's towards the end of the month, we can get, um, departments to start entering supplies, materials and, um, I did talk to Andy. I think he's gonna do it a little differently this year. I think it's gonna be far more efficient. Rather than have all the staff turn in what they need, um, you don't know what you need now, but it's, it's waste their time and waste it's going through. So, um, I think he's got a way to, to make that a lot more efficient. Now, October fifteenth, they have to have the service plan to the AOE. And the service plan is really the budget for next year for special ed. So I can usually grab that and get some information out of that.
You say that was by Oc- Oc- November fifteenth?
October fifteenth, and I know he's working on it now. This'll be the last year for the service plan, um, because of the Act one seventy-three. And then, um, oh, uh, because of all the change. And then we aren't gonna need time studies anymore, no more of this time schedules because the time schedules is how we got our reimbursements. So paperwork-wise, at, um, one seventy-three, it's wonderful. We'll see if we get the same amount of money. Uh, I'm worried about not getting as much funding. It'll be less work for everyone, however, along with that, um, probably a less reimbursement.
And, and if, if the time schedules aren't kept, then you're gonna have less data for showing people funders what the costs are, right?
Well, they're gonna have to keep some things so we can break out the regular ed piece, I'm assuming, but maybe not. I haven't really got, talked to Andy about the time studies. But one of the things it does, it breaks out regular ed from special ed. But the reason to do that is because of the special ed reimbursement guide, which is going to be in effect anymore. So I'm, I'm not really sure. Do you grasp that? 'Cause if there's even any necessity to break it out between special ed and regular ed.
Um, you know, I think the only reason we do it is just to give ourselves an idea of what the, the spending looks like if we're, you know, and breaking down how many special ed students we have, what the current spendings look like and what there might be any leftover for the other struggling learners, whether they're five oh four or, or just struggling period, you know, if we're looking at how it pertains to one seventy-three. But I don't think we're gonna have to break it out as much because we're gonna deal with that one lump sum.
Right, and the special ed technical guide is, you know, at a high school, when they switch classes, that's disallowed. Or, um, lunch duty unless you're with your student and bus duty. And, I mean, we really nitpick it down to the minute to get, um, an act, an, um, actual accounting of what everyone does. I'm thinking that that's not gonna be necessary to that extent.
That's pretty much what they are, time studies, so you can get your money and it's, that's, it's very time-consuming to do the time studies. So I think under one seventy-three, that's part of one seventy-three is not making it so, um, difficult to, to document everything. So we can use the funds almost like Title I, school-wide, you know, if they need it, we're gonna give it to them.
And Title I, we don't break up like that.
No, so it's gonna, I think it's gonna, the model's looking very similar to Title I where it's school-wide, you know.
And so, and we, we lost money on the time study things, they would claw back money once it wasn't perfect.
Well, when it was regular ed, you're right, then we won't have to do that now.
It's a big question, besides the initial funding now, is how will they ever figure out increases from year to year? The first year, it's kinda easy. Say the average last year was this, they just make up some inflation rate or something.
Well, they're gonna start looking at our last, what we've been receiving over the last two years.
That's how it come up, the first number, but the third or fourth year, how do they tell if you...
Now, then it goes to the different model of basically looking at caseloads and... So they're, they're going to ease into it. So the first year or two, you'll get what you think you're getting. And then, uh, your money will start dropping off, I'm afraid.
Okay, um, sort of back to the schedule, then, the WNESU budget, you'll have some idea of how it's looking?
At the October meeting, that's my plan.
And then, and then, but it's not finalized until...
End of November, beginning of December has to be.
Yeah, I think last year was December sixth.
Right, right.
By the time we got it, I know Chris, Kibbie used to say, no, the end of November. But last year, we still had some things up in the air that, um, we had to resolve that. So we went into a lot more depth, um, but December sixth still works.
Okay, yeah. When we get, when will we know about state support? That?
State numbers?
Yeah.
Are on December, second week, first or second week of December is usually when we find those numbers out. Isn't that correct, Edie?
Yeah, last year was really late.
Yeah.
Really, really late. It was almost the end of December. Hopefully, it won't be like that this year.
And even at that point, it's a estimate from the state, right? They don't finalize it until...
Well, the legislature can, doesn't even start Jan- till January, and they can do whatever they want before June first. And that's what happened last year, they changed the law.
I think last year was a perfect storm also with what the, what the, what they wanted to do in the house and have budgets that were already voted on go back and decrease even more. So I think, then it was what we lived last year, so we're hoping last year was just a little blip. And we can move forward a little smoother this year with, with budgets. And they're gonna get our numbers, you know, no later than the second week, first, second week of December.
And then federal support?
It's even later, isn't it?
That's like May.
Yeah.
So we, we have no idea, um, the, the AOE will try to give us some kind of idea of what's happening at the federal level. But as you all know, that's kind of near, so.
I think last year also, it was May, but I think it was well into June before we got anything from the federal.
It was, it was late for the federal, yeah.
Very late in June, so we won't go by last year.
No, no, but, but, but it also means that when, when every district passes its budget and it's okay by voters, that information is not, not available.
But the federal money all goes to the SU and you aren't assessed for that. So what happens if the grant comes in less and we have to look at the staffing that's being paid out of the grant and make cuts there? That doesn't, that won't affect your budget.
'Cause we will issue contracts until that money is...
Yeah, so we know we've got it.
We have that money in hand.
All of that, all of those staff members are ripped every year, um, and because we don't know what's happening with the grant. No, that's totally separate than your assessment, which is just on the general fund expenses.
And then the last one that I have on my list is special ed needs for seventh and eighth graders that we... When, when will we have a, a pretty good idea? I mean, it's not something you share with everybody, but something that you'd be able to... in dollar amounts, you'd be able to pass on to us, when would you have any idea about that?
Uh, I'm not sure, um, I would, I'm not sure, it's the honest answer. I would think by November, like, you know, it's, it's a matter of a meeting and a couple of conversations and a few phone calls, and, I think it's like just coordinating, and I haven't done it with Andy before, so I'm not sure, you know, like, we just have to figure out how to make that happen.
Edie and I were hoping to get most of these numbers, you know, in by end of October, so we have something we can really look at for the first meeting in November.
Right, but that, we can estimate the excess costs, and then we can adjust it when we have the normal numbers.
But so much of it is can, is related to individuals.
Right.
That are can be, that it seems, it's one thing making an estimate based on the people's tiers, it's another thing knowing that, that, uh, something that Doug would know perhaps, or Andy, but none of the rest of us know, that Sam is going, coming into seventh grade, and Sam's needs are gonna be a hundred thousand dollars to pay him.
Right, right, and that we, is taken care of in the service plan. The ones we don't know are the ones that get evaluated and haven't been on an IP, or they move into the district, and we really don't know anything about them, those are kind of the surprises.
And as we all know, special ed's such a moving target in regards to, you know, you know, we, we're, we see an increase in Wyndham County period, in regards to special ed numbers moving in just across state, state lines, because Vermont does a very good job, in regards to taking care of the students who are INPs, so, um, it's, I think it's gonna keep going up, I don't think, I don't see it going down, not based on the numbers we're seeing in this SU, you know, so we can probably anticipate, you know, the increase in those numbers there.
Did I, did I miss any categories that, that are needed to figure out budget?
I didn't think of anything, I think you've pretty much covered everything.
So, so based on that, I've got enrollment?
Oh, preschool.
Preschool.
Pre-K numbers?
Yeah.
And when will those be?
At the same time, I have the kindergarten numbers, so, so soon.
Fairly soon, I think you said that you'd be talking to Molly on or around, or on, before, on or before October fifteen, somewhere like that?
Yeah, I can make that happen here.
Okay, so, I've, I've got enrollment, we'll have a better idea by October fifteen, staff levels by October fifteen, pre-K numbers by October fifteen, uh, salary and benefits, we'll just have to make a guess, because we won't really know till sometime in the winter, when the, when the negotiations are done. The WNESU budget, we're gonna know in, I think by the end of October or so, have a pretty good idea about that. State support, we won't know till mid-December or so, um, and special ed needs, we'll know by November or, for the seventh and eighth graders. Okay, great, so that says to me that it makes sense probably to meet at the end of October, November again, for budgeting.
Yeah, I think, I mean, that would be, I think we're gonna have a lot more to look at, and rather than, we could meet three or four times before then, but it's not gonna change the, the data that we, that we're gonna get to you, so.
Okay, great. Does it make sense, then, I think our, our next scheduled board meeting is, uh, the third Tuesday of the month, which is October sixteen. Does it make sense to have a budget meeting, uh, before that board meeting?
Like tonight, five thirty, and then go into?
Yeah, are we gonna have information by October sixteen?
If enrollment, if you, if you think you can do it, then, then it's not much time.
If not, then we'll, it will be the next one, which will be early November.
I, I will work with whatever we think is best.
Okay, well, let's leave it then, uh, there, and let me know, Doug, and maybe as we think about the agenda in a week or two, well, in a week, um, for the following week, if it seems like it doesn't make sense to have a budget meeting.
Yeah, I, sorry, I'm just looking at the calendar, it doesn't, it's not a, a NICS or anything like that, but it is our middle school awareness night, uh, is, is on that night, so, uh, but it should be over by the regular board meeting, but, I'm, whatever, I mean, I can still come with the numbers, and then, I don't know, I, I just smile and wave at it.
When does the middle school thing start in a year, but?
Yeah, it's five to six.
I suggest we read the background.
Yeah, because we actually have three parents on the board who have kids involved in that, uh, middle school awareness night, and, basically, well, so we'll do the board, we'll do the, the next budget meeting in, essentially, a month from now, early November. Collection day.
Six thirty.
Okay.
So, six thirty, four A.
So, on the sixth of November?
We'll meet at five thirty.
Five thirty, okay, thank you.
For the budget meeting. Okay, I'm gonna call, uh, open end to the, the budget committee meeting, and, um, open up the, uh, the board, regular board meeting.
I mean, it's part, kind of part of my principal's report, but, um, Jenny Berry came to just share some, we have some videos, and just a little kind of show and tell about what's been happening in our class with the, the new reading, uh, yeah, uh, learning that we've been doing, so, if, if maybe it works for everybody to kind of move that up, just in case, then it's in, then her court.
She wants to say not.
Yeah, I don't think we have much on the agenda, um, ahead of that, because I don't think we're talking about policies.
No, I'm getting that ready for you, you'll have plenty down the road, but not tonight.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, why don't we move, just move it ahead of the superintendent and assistant superintendent reports, if that's okay with you, Chris, and?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, I don't have a, a lot to add in addition, um, it's been, like I said before, I continue to meet with, um, principals on a weekly basis, um, you know, I think, you know, the meetings I've been having with, with Doug have been fantastic, were able to, um, give me a really good understanding of the school, and, you know, just even some of the conversations we had today leading into tonight helps us to be on the same page, and, um, we met about the communication piece that came up last board meeting, and, you know, I enjoy working with Doug, he's, he's, you know, he's really, um, someone who's willing to, you know, to, work with me as well, and sometimes that's an always easy, um, I think he, I was, it was amazing.
I'm gonna stop you right there, Chris, because, um, I was actually asking whether you're, whether you could do the superintendent's report after Doug does his principal.
I can do that, too.
Yeah, so that we could, uh, have a presentation with that.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Great, okay, um, uh, now, why don't we, and, and are there any other adjustments, any other adjustments to the agenda? I, um, oh yeah, we've got update on the state board of education meeting here, so, there's a, there's a little bit that I got from, uh, information I got from today's state board of education meeting, which I wanna share, but I'll do that a little later. Is there a motion to approve the minutes, so that we can then go over it?
I moved that we approved the minutes of Tuesday, September eighteenth.
Okay, uh, is there any discussion, the additions or corrections?
And Josh, I think you did a really good job in these.
Thank you.
Particularly, they required a lot of detail, and I think, your thoughtfulness is reflected, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All those in favor of the minutes as presented, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, great, thank you, Josh. Communications and public comments.
Sure, just because I may not be here for the whole meeting, uh, I, from a PTO standpoint, the PTO seems to be much healthier this year, we still would like to see some T involvement, and more PD, but I don't have any, it's tough, because we're working on it, but, um, perhaps we'll try to change that, so that we get people to be representative of the teachers' end of it, and the, we're meeting more frequently, which is also good, that won't have to go on for long, but at least it's a good startup, and, um?
How often is that?
Well, we've been, we were meeting monthly, and we've actually been meeting like, you know, bi-weekly now, because we've got stuff starting off in the new year, implementing the, uh, parent room program, uh, and, um, the skating and Halloween, some changes going on there, so, that's all good, very good. And then, on another note, the pavilion is moving ahead, um, stuff's nice, Adam has actually started, uh, cutting some of the lumber, he took it home with him, just because it was kind of wet, so he's been taking it, helping cutting it at home, and once that goes up, then we'll order the roofing, so we know exactly what we need, and then we will hope to have some sort of celebration for the school and community, I don't know where the threshold will come from, but it'll be a combined effort, since it'll be, you know, used by all, and, uh, we hope to hear, you know, implicit both Janelle and from Doug and the school as to how the pavilion, the major pavilion, which will be dedicated to them, as it's up and going, um, will be used, and how it might be used by the community, and what would be acceptable by the school, the district, or whatever it be, or the powers that be, that's it, very much, any questions?
The estimated time for the dedication?
Want to go out on a limb, huh? Well, I told Adam, you know, we would like to do it in mid-October, but it's been raining, and it's, you know, so it's sort of weather permitting, October, that's, that would be wonderful, this October, so we could still be outside, and not all just, you know, parked in the parking lot, you know, dialed into the, whatever.
All right, thank you, Peter, for that report. Any other comments?
I just wanna acknowledge the increase in communication and my appreciation for that, and that's part.
Specifically, or generally, or?
The increase in communication.
To, to the staff, to the?
To the parents.
Parents, got it, okay, because you have dual roles, I was, you're right.
Yeah, I'm not staff at the school, but, yeah, yeah.
Okay, now, we have, um, no policies to deal with at this point, and so, Doug, why don't we go into the principal's report?
Yeah, um, great, um, I'm just restarting my computer, 'cause the internet died.
Okay.
Thanks, maybe it would be better to do the superintendent's report first, I apologize.
Uh, no, like I said, there's not that much I heard of, heard of it, so, I mean, it's just been nice working with Doug and, and getting to feel for the school and everything that's going on, I'm able to get around to the classrooms, say hi to the teachers, see the kids, so it's been great. Last week, I was away for most of the week, 'cause I had the New England Superintendent's Association Conference, and, uh, it was superintendents from all over New England, Connecticut, Rhode Island, Massachusetts, New Hampshire, Vermont, and, um, the largest turnout was from Vermont superintendents, 'cause we were hosting it, and the, um, the opening speaker was, um, former Secretary of Education Rebecca Holcomb, and so she gave the first speech, and she, um, did it on imagining inequity schools for all students statewide focus, and because Vermont's done a lot of work with looking at schools and how the inequities are, so she presented for about an hour and a half, and did a fantastic job. Some of the other topics that were spoken about was, um, designing and renovating schools for our students, and what that looks like for twenty-first century, um, let's see, reimagining schools from theory to practice, aligning our systems with our beliefs, analyzing structures of inequities. So, most of the conversation was, you know, um, we were, you know, it seems that we're, because of Vermont and all the stuff we're doing, of all that stuff, really looked at that, you know, taking care of kids, not just, you know, responsibilities in the schools, but in the community, communities, you know, if there are inequities, we, there was quite a bit of discussion about, um, you know, trauma, restorative practices, and what we're doing as a state, how we can continue to build on that, you know, but overall, you know, these, sometimes these conferences could be hit or miss, and I think it was a very, um, it was a great conference to go to, you get to meet a lot of superintendents, and find out what's going on in other states, too, and it's safe to say, I think Vermont is, seemed to me is far, very far ahead in regards to, you know, um, teaching the whole, the whole student, in regards to academics, and, you know, social and emotional, I think we're doing a great job of that. I lost the connection as well, but the, uh, there's another thing, that there was a proclamation that, um, the month of October will be, you know, for principal, principal, um, recognition, so I wanted to make sure boards are aware of that, so, you know, the, it's a proclamation that's been made by the governor, that October is, you know, principal appreciation month.
The whole month.
The whole month. After that, it's fair game. And, uh, let's see what else, there is some, um, I put it on, on my site, that there is some training coming up around budgeting for boards, it's a, it's web-based, it's a webinar, so I put that on there, the VSB, if anyone's interested, and, um, you know, log in into that, and, um, you know, Lynn's been doing a lot of, you know, great work, getting the grants, we're, you know, still waiting to get the grants finalized, um, so we can, um, what you'll find is a lot of the grant stuff is, we're doing, taking a SU-wide approach, rather than just an individualized district approach, we're focusing on everything from technologies to restorative practices, to tier-one instruction, so there's a lot of great stuff going on with those grants, and it's all from the hard work that Lynn's been doing, and really looking at where we've been and where we wanna go, so we're aligning our grant monies, and, um, also, she's doing a lot of work with five oh four, you know, stuff that we have going on, too, so, it's been busy, but it's been productive, there's a lot to do, so we're just trying to stick, you know, not branch out too much, and stay focused on one or two things before moving on, and stuff's not going anywhere, it's gonna be there, so, I don't know if any, Lynn wants to add anything to that?
No, we're anxiously waiting for approval of the, of the grant, and when we get that, we have some great plans, and it is the, the consolidated federal grants that are helping to pay some of that PD that the district didn't have to pay, and the idea behind that is, we'd like to have a PD that would, that would be, again, consolidated for all the districts, so that we're all following the, the same kinds of, uh, language and learning and understanding, and the equity piece, so that's, that's really what we're excited about, and we will be getting some computer programs to help augment teaching, to, to help students at home during the summer, at homework club, during the classroom at a station, so we're pretty excited, we're just really waiting for them to, to turn it around, and, and I expected it last week, so I'm hoping this week.
Is, is this the case, you can't hire, like, consultants to come in and do PV until that's approved, or did, did you have people like in September, and somehow you back pay them?
No, the, the original grant application was, I think it was about eighty or ninety percent approved, and then, but they came and they gave us a set of things we needed to fix, and that was in July, well, we fixed those, and then they came back and they found a couple of more, and we fixed those, and then they came back with one, fixed it, sent it right out within ten minutes, and so I'm waiting now, I'm just waiting.
It's been a back and forth since day one, July one, and trying to get these grants, because so many people rely on them.
So, have you done professional development, things up till now, with the part that was approved, or you're gonna have to wait till the whole thing's approved?
Two, two smallish, uh, PDs we did do.
But not, not a lot?
Nothing yet, no.
This is the kind of thing, I mean, I think it needs to be public information, because if we're waiting for the federal government, I'm expecting, you're waiting for the state for approval, you know, and you don't find out till October, you know, you can't, and summer is that, you know, August is the time really, you know, we have for teaching, so, we're instituting good practices, and that went to the school year, it's like, you know, I think pressure needs to be pushed up.
You're right, it's a waiting game, because, you know, what, well, you know, a lot of stuff we wanna do takes place during the summer months, August and- place during the summer months, August and July and.
Yeah.
And ironically, the positions have all shifted in the A L E. They, I mean, we just got an email today. This one's moving over here and here, but we're welcoming this and we're hoping.
Yeah, sounds good.
It is.
Any more questions for Chris Rerman? I, I was wondering, Chris, about, you spent at your superintendent's conference retreat, you spent a fair amount of time talking about equality amongst the schools. And equality is not uniformity. And there certainly are things that make an individual school special, which don't need to make every school special. So how, how, how is it defined? How do you, because we, I know in our seven oh six meetings for the Act Forty-Six here in this area, we had a really hard time trying to figure out what was meant by equity, whether it was just an academic thing or was it every program has to be the same or the, or the test results of everybody have to be the same or what do you?
I look at it as opportunities. I mean, we want to make sure that, you know, whether a student at Westminster's has the same opportunities as, say, Saxons River or Central School. And it's not necessarily that they have to be on site, but if a student is interested in something that we're working as an S U, to say, okay, we can't do, can't do it this way, but we can do it this way. If someone, and then that goes into looking at the, you know, the personalized learning plans and really looking to those and see how, you know, because one student, you know, opportunities is going to look a whole lot different than another student's. But you can't have everything and offer everything. However, you do want to find ways to structure it. So if a student identifies an area of interest, that we find opportunities through flexible pathways or working with another school, tapping into technology to say, okay, we want Spanish here and they have it in Saxons River, how can we use technologies to have that happen? So I think it's more about opportunities. And, and so, I mean, I think a lot of times equitable, you know, equitable isn't always equal. I mean, but the opportunity would be there hopefully, no matter what school you're at, and we'll find a way to get that student what they need or a teacher to get, you know, what they need in order to make it happen. So I think it's more about opportunities.
And thank you, Chris. Doug?
All right. We're, I think we're going to be kind of okay. So we'll give it a shot. So maybe we'll start with that wall because it looks like I have a little bit of internet at the current moment and, if that makes sense. So, yeah, so we've started a new reading approach with expeditionally learning, English Language Arts reading portion of the, of the program. And it's, it's the piece that kind of ties in habits of character. It has these things called modules, which are really just thematic studies and has a block called All Block, which is kind of like your differentiated small group guided reading and independent reading kind of cycle. So it has a couple of different components. And it's, it's, it's nice because we're seeing some like nice school-wide unanimity around some things that we were kind of all doing before, but kind of like it's just making it a little bit tighter. So like learning goals are like becoming a little bit tighter and student conversations are just a little bit more obvious, a little more part of daily instruction. Again, stuff that was all there, but it's kind of like we're doing it in a similar way and so similar conversations are happening. And so anyways, Jenny had shared with me a couple of videos of her, of her students kind of doing some book talks, you know, as third graders kind of for the first time and then also doing their reflection and debrief on that. And then, I don't know if it makes sense, you want me to try to show the reflection piece first because that one I think is queued up and ready to go? And then you can kind of share.
So just a little background about this. We, this was our first unit assessment. This is a reflection about that process. So one of the really valuable parts of the program is that it puts students in situations where they have to think critically and have conversations with their peers, with, you know, supporting evidence and really it puts them in a position of really being thoughtful and reflective and behaving in a way that's respectful of others. And again, those are all things we've expected of our students in the past. But this program has immediately, I recognized the shift for the better. And students really are stepping up and wanting to achieve more. Some of the lessons, I thought, oh my gosh, this is going to be really a challenge for our kids. And every time, whether it's been, you know, huge success, worth lost, there have been those too, but regardless, the kids are really engaging and doing their best. And we learn from every, every scenario that we are put in. And this, so this has, this had been just after our, our unit, unit assessment, which we might go back to, but this is a reflection piece of that.
My highlight was listening to Kai say what?
Got a little shout out.
When Steph was stepping. My highlight was everybody had a good voice and it was pretty loud. Like, oh my gosh, everybody's so good.
Did you hear that? My highlight was hearing about all the wonderful books I'd like to read now.
My highlight was sharing and hearing people tell me all about their books that they like.
My highlight was hearing all about the books and stuff.
My highlight was giving to, um, three, three different languages.
My, my highlight was listening. My highlight was about, um, listening to other people's hard work on a book.
My challenge.
My highlight was listening to our kids about one thing, laundry.
My highlight was listening to everybody tell about their books.
My highlight was listening to Makai also.
My highlight was listening to Makai also.
My challenge was that I really wanted to hear more about your books because your discussions were so good. It made me very interested. And then I wanted to ask questions, but I was trying to be a really good listener, so.
My highlight was hearing the people read the books because then I got to hear a little bit of it so that when I'm done, if I liked it, their challenge and their good part about it, then maybe I could read too. And my challenge was.
Could we agree that it was a little challenging to sift behind a summer for that? All right. Celebrate yourself as a participant. Any others?
So that particular reflection was about books kids had chosen on their own. Another huge benefit of the program is that one of the very first things I noticed, and I went straight to Doug, because we have no shortage of resources thankfully in our school. We are thankful to our community for the generosity and resources and programming. But what our study right now is about overcoming learning challenges near and far. And we've learned about the different kinds of libraries around the world and how kids access books and how they don't unfortunately always access books. And this was the first great book that we were reading and it's called Rain School. When I gave this hardcover book to every student in our class, who would have thought they'd never touched a book ever. It was amazing. They were so appreciative. They wanted to write Mr. Cusia's a thank you letter right, right then. I think we, I don't think we had that fall for it. We had a discussion, an impromptu discussion about it. But the value of kids really recognizing how fortunate we are, their gratitude keeps coming out in discussions about, we've read, we're reading Nazreen's Secret School right now. And kids are learning about, being reflective of the gist of the story, the moral or lesson or central message of the story. And so many kids are so grateful that we have these resources and just that our experience is not as challenging as Nazreen's or as Thomas's or, you know, other characters that we're reading about. So the conversation is rich. It's remarkable that, you know, they're seeing this in a new light. It's really, it's really great to see that through their eyes. Again, it's not, we have books, but just how things are developed and laid out is really thoughtfully done. And look, our kids are really appreciating it, so. I don't know, you can just pick a couple of minutes of another one, I think. Yes. So we'll just watch a couple of minutes of this, but this is that dialogue.
Is this thirty seconds?
Is that thirty seconds? Yeah, we think it's a little long. I think that's only like thirty seconds long. That's just a little snippet. But that is the, many students spoke of their highlight being Makai sharing and Afghanistan sharing, so it was.
What I like about this book is that it, um, there's some challenging words for me. So could I like go challenge papers? And the things I noticed from reading is that not everybody got perfect magic in this book. Nori is the main character. She got her aunt said that she had messed up magic, but she, but Nori never gave up on trying.
Who's next?
Um, I like, this is a cool dialogue. And I like about it is that, um, even you, it's the main character, and her teacher is having a wedding and she's secretly, um, having a wedding club to decorate and get all the stuff ready.
Um, this is called The Gang of the Dino Truck. And it tells you what happened. And the main character is dinosaur's truck that is something in the mayor hat when all they were steamed up. They're mean, tired. Mayor said they had to go to school to be a nice tanner. This one can probably giant squirm. It teaches you about like, what type of, like, I, I mean, the wind, what night squirm can probably like what they can do and stuff, or like, that can take down a whole entire ship and over ten feet.
Another huge advantage is that this, these conversations and dialogue is accessible to all students. We have vastly, you know, a large range of readers in our class and every student can participate successfully in our conversations and, and be successful. So that's another huge advantage. I had mentioned to the kids that we were discussing what was going well about E L and I have some third grade feedback. So if you didn't mind, I'd just read a few of those things too. And if anyone has questions along the way, please stop me from talking. So we use these binders as well, which is our method for organizing all of the methods. And the kids take a lot of pride in these. They're really, you know, they, it's a safe spot, which is one of them said, one of them said it's exciting and they keep their whole safety organized. So it's a sort of a mature system and they feel really proud about that. They are showing self-control, meaning respectful materials. We're using Chromebooks to extend our learning. We're learning about compassion and what ethical means. We're reading about people, how people learn in other places such as Chad in Afghanistan. We're learning about other places around the world. We're reading Rain School and Nazreen Secret School. It's good to read lots of books and know what's in them. All Block has a lot of tools for your vocabulary. We learn more about vocabulary in Module, which is another section of our daily lesson. We talk about learning targets and goals for the day. We learn about prefixes and suffixes, learning about the gist and moral of the story, how to make full constructed sentences, learning about respecting others, how to use protocols, overcoming learning challenges near and far. And we are doing complex things in All Block and Module. So that's, you know, right out of the mouth of some third graders. So they're really taking, they have a lot of ownership over, over the entire process. And it, you know, it's really evident in everything that they do. They face our challenge, our share, fair share of challenges, but they certainly are up for the challenge and I'm really proud of so far what we've done. And as Doug mentioned, there's, there is a lot of continuity. Having started it in third grade with this particular group, typically they would have done kindergarten and first grade and second grade leading up to what we're doing. We're really jumping in and they're adjusting well considering most would have already, most students would have already had three years under the belt and known a lot of the language and structures. And so they're, they're doing really well and I think, you know, it's a good experience for us all.
Any questions for Jenny or Doug?
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, yeah. Anytime, pop in. I mean, I think I could speak on behalf of everybody. That would, that'd be great to have you all.
You can at least speak on yours.
For myself.
I'll show most people. At least ninety-five percent of people.
Maybe the learning curve for us all, it's a lot of work. We, you know, it's, it's definitely huge undertaking, but we're committed as a staff to do that and put the work in and go at a pace that seems reasonable and productive for everybody.
Clarify for me how it's different from, from what you did before.
Sure. So before we found a model called Four Blocks and it's, which was a balanced literacy approach. And it had a word study component in it. And it was, it was a program that Westminster had been using for sixteen, seventeen years or something like that and had, anyway, so it's.
And it's a reading program for everybody.
Correct. The specificity with what, of what you're doing and when you're doing it and how you're doing it was not really there, right? So one of the things we were finding is that new staff who may or may not have had a lot of literacy teaching experience prior to coming to Westminster would be a little bit lost trying to look at that and also knowing that that was written many years before Common Core was thought of. So the new standards and like what's expected at, at each grade level kind of put them in, in a bind, so trying to find it. Similar components are pretty similar. So Four Blocks had a philosophy of all students should be accessing one grade level text, right? So like you, like there's kind of like two camps in the literacy world, if you will. There's like differentiate your text for all students so that they're at their just right level or their instructional level, if you will. And so that's, and then, you know, so they're reading at different places. And then there's another camp that's kind of like, no, you need to raise the bar for all students. You need to give all students access to challenging texts regardless of where they are or else they'll never get there. So like, and both of them have a lot of research, both of them might be like they're like diehard fanatics, but the general, anyway, so you have to, in this one, you have to scaffold students up to it. And anyway, so that's pretty similar between the two approaches. This one adds in a more robust component as far as small group instruction and the word study kind of component, those a little bit lacking. And again, it kind of tightens up some of those aspects vertical alignment wise so that, you know, we know a little bit more about what's happening in second grade, third grade. And because it's, the way that it's written and embedding the habits of character throughout it, so it's constantly asking kids to reflect like, hey, how did we use perseverance today? Or, you know, in what ways was collaboration a part of your experience today? Just having those conversations and the, the learning targets kind of like, it's, it's an approach that kind of like a philosophy, if you will, that kind of like, and this is the way that that philosophy is coming out. So some of those things like learning targets and talking about learning targets, reflecting on your learning, which is kind of leading us into that arc or like enabling us into that arc of student-led conferences in the spring and stuff. So that's all kind of like embedded or like a part of this approach like from its conception. So I guess like. I guess like holistic is the thing that keeps coming up to me, like it's thematic, like you heard about the theme, so it's not just a book, you're kind of like approaching this theme with like these learning targets you're trying to hit, and then the texts serve that purpose, and so, um, I don't know if I'm explaining really the differences really well, but that's, those are kind of some of the main super broad brushstrokes.
I think it seems more, it doesn't feel like just a literacy model for me, it, it seems like, as Doug was saying, it really integrates social practice. We first recognize characteristics or habits of character in a character, and then we practice that, and then we generalize that. So it's really a constant dialogue and constant flow of recognizing and practicing, and it's really, you know, emphasizing who we already are, and that was definitely not present in Four Blocks. That's one big difference, I would say.
Right, yeah, I mean, Four Blocks was really just an organizational principle around how to teach literacy, so you have your, make sure you have your writing, make sure you have your free to self, you know, make sure you have your kind of got it, you know, so they kind of organize it in principle, which this is, again, more of a program, so, which is a long there, which is also what makes it really exhausting, because you're trying to drink from a fire hose here, so, so if you see teachers kind of frazzled by Friday or it's Sunday, that's a little bit of why it's a lot.
And how did, how did it come to us, and who found it, and is it supervisory union wide?
It's not supervisory union wide, so we started this process, I don't know, January of last year or something like that, and we were doing, I think it kind of got kicked off through some of that, the SIP work, kind of like identifying like where was our weaknesses, what do we need to do, and so reading and literacy became one of them, like looking at our scores, just looking at how we're able to talk to each other and have, again, that kind of continuity across the entire experience for a student, because we had pockets of expertise, certainly, like nothing that we're saying here diminishes that, it's just how we were talking to each other about that was hard, because we didn't really have that common vocabulary, common approach, even though we had this kind of Four Blocks framework that we were operating in. So that kind of started it, and then we, you know, we spent a couple of months just looking at, okay, what should we do, like, how can we look into this, what, like, what, you know, how far should we go, like, you know, we had all these kinds of conversations, and so then we eventually came up with, we were kind of down to two different places that seemed to make sense, and one of them was, and we were looking, we kind of were specifically looking for some sort of like program or thing that could like help us make sense of it, thinking again, I'm trying, we're thinking again of new teachers, thinking again of how often teachers are flipping grade levels at our school, because like groups of kids coming up or groups of kids, you know, like expanding, so like teachers are constantly changing grade levels, and it's like, it's a whole new ballgame again every year, and so like trying to find something that could be supportive of that. So we looked at Funtas and Penel, Clashen, which Funtas and Penel are researchers out of, Lesley University, like super well regarded, kind of the gurus in literacy and stuff, and then Heinemann is, Heinemann sells their things, and, and so, anyway, so they created a product that's like, hey, you can buy this stuff and sell our things, and we looked at that and we liked, I liked a lot of it, because my background in training is as a literacy specialist and stuff, so that appealed to me, it was like into my training. And then we also looked at this expeditionary learning, and I'm not really sure a hundred percent how we stumbled on this one, but, you know, just through different people, like I've had friends who've taught in expeditionary learning schools, which has different than the program itself, but, you know, and so I think some of the staff had like connections with people who had been using pieces of the program in the past. Anyways, and then we just kind of looked at them all and were like, you know, is it worth us taking a risk and trying this out, and since this is an open source curriculum, they, they got the money, because when New York was doing Race to the Top Grants and stuff like that and trying to get, they, they made these curriculums, and some of them are better than others, but that's how they, that's, that's how they got the fund, and they wrote a grant to be the people to supply the curriculum for New York State, which they did, and then they learned some things and revised it, and that's the version that we're using now, but it's, like you can Google it and you can look up the lesson plans and everything that you want to look up there, which was also appealing.
You're Googling what you Google.
So it's expeditionary learning, if you go, if you Google EL, you'll, you'll find it.
Can I add that?
Please.
So the, um, the first program that Doug spoke of was sort of, might have been the path of least resistance, perhaps, it would, it's a little more applicable, a little more-
It's compartmentalized, so it's like, it doesn't bleed over into everything.
It would have perhaps been a little bit easier to apply and to take on, but I, the staff agreed that it was important to work on this cultural shift and put our efforts into a greater, sort of the greater good, not just literacy, but we had this exciting opportunity to teach more than just the literacy component, so.
Yeah, it has a huge integrated arts component in it as well.
Just saying.
It has a, it has a very large integrated arts.
Integrated arts, great.
Chris or Doug, are there other people in the union using EL? Other schools?
No, no, and like, you know, that's one of the things that, you know, eventually the, I'm sure the supervisory union is going to get closer and closer on in different ways, and definitely, at least around the training and the way that we understand how good reading comes about, but the district, I'm sorry, I'm only speaking only because I was here, and like I asked the other principals, and like, like back in January, and I was like, what are you guys doing, like, where are we at? And all the other schools are also kind of in the searching process, and they all landed in different places. I say all the other schools with the exception of Saxons River, who's, you know, been pretty steady on with what they've been doing, and they do a more open-ended guided reading, they're using Lucy Culkins, which we use for writing, they're using that, and they also use that to support some of the stuff they're doing in, in reading as well in a workshop model, so they, it's kind of a different approach. Central has been using Successful for a lot of years, so, and that's a, that comes out of John Hopkins University, and it's, has its things, it's got some similar things in that it's like, they, they start with like a text, but they're, they have a lot of different ways of like differentiating how the kids go to different classes, it's a different thing, you gotta buy it, you gotta have consultants, it's, it's a whole thing.
But as we move forward to SU, I mean, this year for myself and, and Lynn Barry is that we're really trying to identify all the areas that we can hopefully move forward, so we're all working in the direction of liberty and identifying programs that will work for all of us. We all know that each school is unique in its own way, and they can have that, but we still want to make sure that we're, we're not, as an SU, just all over the place in regards to local assessments and everything, so right now as a team, we're trying to work on and identify those areas how we're alike and how our needs are alike, so we can start identifying different programs and curriculums that are going to be SU-wide, but still allowing each school to have its own individuality and what they need for those students, but, you know, and that's what we're doing with a lot of the grants, is identifying some of those programs and, you know, using that money to support it rather than the local budgets in the grant. And I know Funtas and Penel is, is something that's, you know, it's used very, you know, quite a bit throughout Vermont and Windham County, you know, Windham Central uses it, Funtas and Penel, and I think Windham Southeast, so, I mean, these are all the things, it's not just as an SU but as a county, I think we're moving in that right direction that we're, we're more united in a lot of different approaches that we're taking towards learning.
Thanks. Jenny, I just have one question, but you said that the, you were able to integrate the program in the classroom with students at different levels, obviously there's going to be a wide range, could you just address that briefly and how that works?
Yeah, absolutely, so we, we scaffold accordingly, so everybody has the same text, we're reading from the same book, it's really presented in a way where the teacher, the teacher reads aloud first, so everyone has that shared experience of hearing the story, and then we take notes on that, so we do these note catchers where we're identifying certain things we want to focus on, and from there we develop a constructive response, but in the meantime, sometimes students might read less text, so that's one way you can scaffold, maybe, or teacher support or small group reading, but it's, I real, I feel like it's highly accessible to all students, and they're still getting really rich texts rather than a different text. I think there's a lot said for kids having that shared experience.
Sure.
So there is, you know, there's other ways you can scaffold, but it really begins first with presenting it similarly, having those learning targets firsthand and reviewing that daily so that you know what we're looking for in text, and then how that text, that text is accessed by different students very slightly, but it's still the same process for every student, and then you saw-
They can participate on an equal level.
Mm-hmm, and you wouldn't know the various reading levels of students participating in that conversation, so it makes that dialogue really, really rich from all participants. That, that model, by the way, was a sort of fishbowl model, so that was why there were some kids sitting on the outside, but that was, again, that's another skill of being an audience member when others are sharing, and, yeah, I would say it seemed, I feel every student in my class feels successful.
Well, just to interject in the Small World Department, I was the ethnographer for the original Expeditional Learning School, and then there were the first four, plus like twenty-plus years, and so I helped develop this program as a researcher and developer way back when, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, but interestingly, I felt like they've grown, but it's like it's been twenty-plus years, I guess, back when.
I have a question about it, you had mentioned how, in your grade level, they're trying to catch up on the vocabulary, so as a parent of a sixth grader, is there any disadvantage for the kids who are jumping in that far into a program that has expectations that you've been doing it all along? Or can they just pop in at that point?
Yeah, I mean, we're all popping in, so like, you know, like every, every person is a little bit, and, you know, I think the biggest disadvantage isn't so much in the content or in what we're asking students to do, it's just that they're, the, I guess, like the, for instance, the discussion protocols, that was like a third grade version of the fishbowl, and if you watched the fourth grade version of the fishbowl, the kids are then like giving back and forth a little bit more, you know, and that keeps progressing, and so that's a little bit new, like kids running like protocols and like ways of conversing with each other and kind of like formal, I mean, we do turn and talk and stuff, you know what I mean, like collaborative learning has always happened, you know, I'm not taking that away, I'm just saying like the level of rigor with which we're doing that has kind of stepped up, so that kind of puts everyone on their heels, but it's, and it's, it's in a good way, we just would be able to go faster and learn more, but the things that kids are learning to do, you know, like one of the things I keep telling the teachers, because it's a lot, you know, and like, you know, who knows what, you know, where we'll end up at the end of the year, but, you know, we, we did this on purpose to try to, to do something that we thought was urgent, to help improve like students' reading experiences and our own like expertise in doing this, and so we kind of took that risk on, and, but we're doing it like within our own like level of being able to push that out, right? So it's, it's a huge thing, there's two different components that we're looking at, you know, so we're talking a little bit about this module, which is that kind of whole group thing, and then there's that whole All Block thing, which is like the small group thing, which I, you know, that's where the kids are doing independent reading and, you know, and these logs and stuff, but the experience is that, I, I, like I kept saying, it's like our kids aren't going to lose out, you know, like by doing this experiment, we're not losing out, we're like, we're going to be right where we were, and the only possibility that we really have is to get better with it, so kids being able to talk and, and speak, you know, speaking and listening skills kind of come a little more to the forefront in this, it was kind of designed on purpose to like make sure it was hitting all the Common Core standards and strands, and that's often one that kind of gets left out, or at least left out intentionally, like, wait, that's not what I meant to say. It gets left out because it's not put in with intentionality, right? I mean, they're still talking and listening, but like in order to, to monitor that, so, so, yeah, I mean, like I think kids having that experience of having to talk and defend, and Janelle was talking about the integrated arts piece, a lot of, you know, some of the places where they practice that, refinement, revision, reflection, and then go back again, refine and reflection, and like it's, you know, really getting kids into that cycle, which we've done with Culkins Writing for a long time, but it's bringing that to other aspects and how you talk and how you present, and like one of their standards is high-quality student work, so, that you have polished products, which again is just a little bit of a philosophy shift, so again, like, so for a kid who's just coming in, in sixth grade, like all this is kind of like, not all of it, but, you know, like, some of it is like, but, but wherever they get to, they're gonna, I think it's gonna put them in a stronger position going into whatever middle school they go into, being a-
There's not like an expectation that they get from A to Z within a school year in these kids, because if you popped in, you would only get to L?
Well, and so that's sort of the beauty of having, like, giving them access, so like you, there is an expectation that the reading level increases, right? There is an expectation that we hit all the standards for that grade level. Again, I think we're going to be doing a better job of that because it's like so much more, overall, we'll be doing a better job of that because it's so laid out in that way, but because the text level is challenging to begin with, like we're, and it's multiple text sets, you know, so for instance, in, in fifth grade, they're doing The Esperanza Rising, which is like fifth grade level text, but they're also reading the Declaration of Human Rights, and they're kind of like comparing those two things, so like, you know, adult document, kid document, and they're crunching through both those things, so they're, and then in All Block, they're also getting experiences where like they're just write texts, like whatever book they're interested in at that level, or whatever content level book they can access at that level. So, yeah, I mean, like reading is one of the, it's not quite as streamlined in math in some ways, like, you know, like you can't just teach a kid, okay, now you're reading Level L, I've taught you everything about Level L in Funtas and Penel, now I'm doing Level P, which was one of our problems before, we've been doing the F and P thing, you know, like Lynn and Chris were saying, like, you know, that kind of professional wellness kind of, like, you can't just throw a kid into a level and then know what to do with them, right? Like, it's, it's like, okay, great, I'm Level M, you know, what does that mean? Like, what's my next learning thing that I need to do? I'm talking a lot because I spend a lot of time doing this, and so I'm, I'm sorry if I'm like over the sharing or if I'm missing what you're asking for, but-
No, no, you're totally answering.
And I think when I said that, I mentioned, I perhaps was speaking on the behalf of the teacher more than the student, because the students can jump right in, and a lot of those academic vocabulary words are words that they've already, you know, discovered, noticed, quote, you know, so, and then it just varies with the content or the topical vocabulary words, which are specific to what they're learning and, and stuff, so I guess maybe that, my statement about that was maybe about, you know, us having to talk into it too.
Any more questions for Doug or Jenny?
I think it's also been only a month as well, so, with that, I have a fifth grader who's doing her math homework and who is on fire and loving everything about reading and her literacy, so. She's, there's something about something new also that they're, they're off and running in a huge way, reading books like that.
That's the conversations that you're bringing, all the kids are talking about the books they're reading, and that's really exciting.
I have a first grade son who has never been so inspired about reading, he, we went to the Garthwick bookstore and had to get Esperanza Rising, now it's a trick to not let him read it, but to be having such desire to read that and feel, you know, feel the experiences that Esperanza is feeling in that book, and just, that was a gift to me to have him so motivated and excited about it, you know.
Well, thank you for the presentation, thank you today.
You're welcome.
It's nice to have a teacher come in and, and, and program. Thank you.
Good to do it.
All right, anything else?
Mr. Principal. Well, I feel like I've been talking for a long time, but, I mean, so in the principal part, I kind of just laid out communication plan, and if you have any questions about that, I, I call that phase one, and like Chris was saying, like, you know, that was super helpful and helped me kind of frame thoughts around how I can, you know, meet that need, and so hopefully, you know, as you're reading these or looking at these, you can kind of, you know, press rewind and it's like, okay, that jives or doesn't. The only change is that the weekly information is going to go out on Thursdays, the teachers requested that, just in deference to kind of split families that often, like the information gets lost over the weekend and not during the week kind of a thing, so that was just an experience call on their part. Then I just, little blur of student lives here, today was their first day, yay! Interestingly enough, it may, the, their, some of their story adventure is also kind of tied into what they're doing in their thematic unit around the Greek mythology and whatnot. Peter already talked about PTS, I'll skip that, and then, yeah, I just kind of gave two blurs about, it's kind of two new initiatives we're doing, like with the Viking Voyage, which is really just a positive recognition and reinforcement campaign that we're trying out, that we kind of targeted for those times of years when we noticed behaviors spiked, and oddly enough, whatever, October seems to be that time, one of those times, as much or more so than around the holidays, which are a little more traditionally expected, but, so we're trying them this week. Mostly I think kids are pretty stoked about it, like, you know, it's just, again, it's just a way of kind of like flipping that narrative from-
Longboats.
This is, I know, I got all these stupid, gitchy terms this year. Viking Voyage is the Positive Recognition and Reinforcement Campaign, so this is the thing where we're like, oh, gosh, I notice you're being really responsible in taking notes and not writing down all the dumb things I say, appreciate that, and you pass them these oars, which an astute six grader pointed out were classic, and I'm like, sorry, dude, like that was before all the articles about that, but we're not, they're not now, like they're here, so, anyways, so that's that, and our goal is to get to Iceland, which is three thousand two hundred miles or oars away, and if you want, after the meeting, I'll show you a really dorky video about it and I'll teach you all about it. Longboats are the multi-age kind of peer, not peer, excuse me, adult mentor thing that we're kind of organizing and starting this year, and so those meet each Monday at eight ten, just for like five minutes, just quick chat. ten, just for like, five minutes, just quick check-in, goal-setting kind of thing, and then we do like, monthly or bi-monthly, I know, all these terms, they're ridiculous, but, Long Boat Clan meetings, where we all get together and then, Jim, we set up some sort of activity or kind of team-building experience to kind of keep those relationships going and, and foster their growth over time. So, that's it, now I'm presenting my whole report.
Thank you, Doug. Any, any questions for Doug? All right, thank you. Business manager went home, so, any committees have, uh, you mentioned support committee there? WNESU did have a meeting, when was it? Very recently, last week.
Last, yeah.
And do we have a report about that? Let's see, are you there?
No.
I, I was there. Cheryl was there, Cheryl, do you have a report about?
Oh.
Wilson?
I don't at the moment.
Chris, maybe you can help me with that. You're right there.
I'm just there.
That's right.
So, we had a discussion about Act 173.
Seventy-three.
And, uh, a discussion about, um, signing a, the bus loan papers, or the, it was loan papers, it wasn't specifically for a bus, that did get signed, five members signed it, and we had a discussion about how things went at the Green Mountain State Board of Education meeting, and very positive, it was very short but positive, what had happened there, that was reported. And I spoke a little bit about the student-teacher ratio and how the, the state is actually breaking down what the numbers are. So, we lose the students that go to the Brattleboro Tech Center, but we get to keep the students that go to Springfield Tech Center. However, we also have to take five teachers for them, because we are 25% of that school population, so we take on, in our ratio, 25% of the teachers, which is five teachers. So the bottom line is, after a lot of hard work and trying to understand it, the, they have a specific formula they use and...
And we think we know how to look at it now. After three months, we did do that.
Yeah, but it is 4.08 teachers per sh, per, uh, students per teacher, or per staff member in the district, so, um...
Including special ed staff.
Definitely.
Right.
The, uh...
Including pairs, not special ed teachers.
Pairs, not the teachers, not the special education teachers, but the special education pairs, so. And I'm trying to remember what else, that big discussion on the signing was quite interesting. We were talking about the policy committee, getting themselves together, and I, I believe that Superintendent Pratt has a plan for that, the policy committee will start again, and, I think that's really...
Just it.
The gist of it. It was a long meeting, but...
I think one thing I would add, and thank you for helping refresh my brain, when those, the meetings roll together. Yes, they do at times, but, I think, you know, another comment around the Act 46 presentation to the Board of Education, it was just, it's another kind of positive set of experiences, is we, members of the Supervisory Union and other board members get to know and work with one another more, and, and so it was very positive in that respect, and just a great amount of collegiality and shared ownership for a process that we all care a lot about.
I think it was great collaboration, great teamwork in regards to how we, you know, everyone came together to present as one.
Okay, great, thank you Cheryl, thank you Lynn. New business for discussion or action. We received a Dollar General grant for $3,500, and I'm taking the motion to approve. Are we, should we do that?
No, no.
I'm taking the motion to approve the, let's see, the general dollar grant for $3,500.
Great, any discussion with the other four?
So, this is the one that I brought up last, last time, it's a, it was a literacy grant to purchase extra materials to support the rollout of, yeah, so like, help us buy some of the extra books for independent reading for students, so, it's for books, extra books.
I'll say, I'm not going to be against getting a grant, but I think we should be wary and discuss who to get grants from, because it's in a fragile area economically, and I'm not sure anybody will give us money necessarily, but we want to take the money from. I encourage us to be thoughtful about the way we get the money from, whether we don't get it, or someone I think will send it, might be time to...
Fair play. Any further thoughts? I mean, do you have any specific suggestions, like, you're just...
I don't mind, I'm with them. I mean, we had this issue years ago, I spotted, I wrote about a Clayton paper about Home Depot was here, and, and they, you know, closed tendies essentially, and then they gave money for secondary rail, like, to build a playground. And I think that hurt our local economy, especially Home Depot left from Brattleboro was bad all around, and I think it hurt the community. Home Depot sent in 60 employees to build a playground, or 100 employees, it wasn't townspeople for the most part. You know, I don't think every company helps the Vermont economy, keeps us strong communities, and I think Dollar General has some issues, and I think some people, I would, Dollar General's, I'm just, I'm just representing, I think people, some people in the community say, you know, I don't, particularly if you're talking on them, but, they come into a rural community, you know, they, they, it certainly impacts them on what they do.
Okay, great, thanks Rick. Any further discussion?
Well, you know, just to add to that a little bit, when we, one of the rules of receiving money is to make sure that there are no strings attached, you know, and if it, it was just something that you initiated, that you wanted support for, and they provide the monies for that, which is a legitimate educational purpose, that's how we always need to operate. And I'm sure that's what you described there. The other point, though, that Rick is raising, is, you know, what value does the donor get out of an association that's saying that they helped a local school? We do need to be cautious about that, but in this case, it sounds like we can stand on the ground that this was for a legitimate and necessary educational purpose.
Books, yeah, yeah, I mean, it's books, yeah. But yeah, no, you're right, I was not a consideration that I had put much thought into, as far as like, you know, that, that their name would appear in the minutes and that, you know, we'd be like, accepting it. There's no publicity thing tied to the, to the grant, you know, we just have to report that we completed, you know, that we, we purchased them, but, that was, I was just excited that, to get the free money, and it was easy, but, you know, I suppose that's probably the problem, if it was easy, you know. So, yeah, so, I apologize for not being more cognizant of, of what that may have done.
In some ways, more power to you for getting money for, to support education in schools. At the same time, I think it is good to be aware of these issues, and if there's any worries, to, we can all talk about it, so.
I would be on the same page in regards to, as they come through, to have that conversation, so, you know, one person might know more than the other, and we just share the thoughts.
Sure, sure, great. Okay, all those in favor say aye? Aye. All those opposed? Communication plan, we, we talked about it a little bit, but...
Sure, so, I mean, the, the first phase is really just to try to, kind of, condense and clarify, was sort of the main, the main purpose of what we're trying to do, trying to understand, you know, what, you know, Andrea brought up last time, and just, you know, just some other comments that kind of came through and talking to other people about what it was, that, they need to kind of more clearly identify what the, like, the root of the issue was, and then also try to, obviously, come up with a proactive plan to, to fix that, so. So a lot of them were, was to just, to get things sent home on, on a single day, you know, it's, it's a pretty simple thing to do, and it just, it kind of aids in the more successful transmission of things from home to school, if people only know that they have to check the bags one day, you know, and, you know, as a parent, I'm guilty of that as well, like, I'm checking every night-ish, and, and, you know, so it's, so hopefully that, that will kind of help. And then to also go, sort of, anti, the progression that we're trying to go back to, but it's kind of like, just saying, okay, take stock, let's take a step back and go back to paper transmission for some of these things, which is, which is, you know, it's, it's a lot of paper, but it's also like, that kind of clarity piece that we seem to be missing, or seems to be kind of bypassing some people. That is only kind of a temporary measure, just as we kind of like, step back and say, okay, can we get to a, a better baseline to improve upon? So then, with that, trying to increase the frequency, but also kind of like, narrowing the directional channels of, of what we're trying to do. So, one of them is that, to start putting out weekly news, you know, by myself, you know, teachers will continue to do at least monthly reports of what they're doing, so we've, you know, last year they were doing, you know, once a month reports, we put them all into one big PDF. Now they're going to do at least monthly, some of them will do more, some of them will stick to monthly, and again, the point of that is to increase that frequency and to, and to try to keep the clarity without like, overburdening the teacher. So I'm producing more communication, but not expecting, you know, staff to like, kind of step up to that level yet, or at least until they're where we're at. That, again, paper copies, electronic copies, kind of trying to duplicate, so just kind of like, pfft, but those are kind of our two main formats, and so, and then, kind of start a, and then update the calendar, obviously, and then start a slow phase out of Facebook and some of the other platforms, because our audience isn't super huge on those, and like, all those things that distract you or, or create, they just create inefficiencies. So if I'm trying to post to Facebook, and I'm trying to post to the website, and I'm trying to do weekly newsletters, and I'm, you know, trying to reinstitute connections with newspapers, like, you can't, you can't, it's too sprazzled, at least in our current state, so, narrow it down, just get really good at doing a couple of those things. Mr. Pratt had the suggestion of doing, kind of, quarterly parent surveys, just to kind of monitor how they're doing on that, and I think that's a great idea. Short, simple, and we'll send this out multiple ways, so again, we'll do the paper, but we can do the Google form, so we can even do it on School Messenger via the phone, although I haven't done it on the new system, but I'm pretty sure you can still do it. And if not, anyway, like, it should give us a lot of feedback as to, you know, just basic five questions, like, you know, what form of communication do you prefer, how often do you want communication, how is your rate your current, our current communication, are you comfortable going paperless, suggestions, questions, or comments, you know. Obviously, it would be, it would be my goal that if I can get everybody's email, because I think like, 99%, of people have an email that is accessible to them most of the time, and I made that statistic up, I don't actually know what our current rate of email is, because it doesn't, it's not even tied to a wireless or internet at home anymore, because it's kind of ubiquitous. It would be to be able to get to a place where we're, you know, paperless, but to let people leave us there, and to not like, force that upon them and have things dropped in the meantime. And also, just listen to what the survey is saying, so, you know, if the survey is saying, no, I don't want paperless, because another thing that can be really confusing is trying to do these split things, so like, we're going to do paper, we're going to do email, then you want, like, oh, these seven people want paper, and these, you know, like, that creates inefficiencies, and it creates like, tons more work to try to, and it creates mistakes, right? And so then we mess up, somebody doesn't get it, so, trying to narrow all that down. Okay, I think I'm, I think I hit most of them, so, sorry. I don't want to overexpose it, I'm sorry.
Any questions?
Well, I, I really appreciate it, Doug, and, and as one of those who asked that you include board members who don't have children in the school, I got my first call from you yesterday, and really appreciated hearing it, and, and thank you for the, the thoughtfulness, you know, being so proud to be part of it all. I think we, we still have a ways to go, and this is, I think, a good effort at this point.
Any other thoughts? Great, thank you Doug. I, I have noticed a, an improvement in the communication, or it feels like there's more communication just in the last couple of weeks from the schools, and, it's good to, good to see. Okay, let's see, whole business. Update on the State Board of Education meeting, September 19, I think we talked about that a little bit. I do have, just before this meeting started, I got the, an email from the Vermont School Rock Group about the results of the today's Board of Education meeting, which I can share. It sounds like there was an interesting and very full day today, where the State Board of Education met in Bethel, Vermont, to, just, to talk, their, their objective was to talk about the principles they'll be using to guide their decision-making process over what districts they, district plans they accept, and what districts they're, they force merger on, what alternative governance proposals they will accept, and so on. So, the first thing that, I'll just summarize a couple of interesting things about this. The first is that the committee on their, sort of, they had one vote at the end, one decision-making process at the very end, and they were split five to four in the decision-making. And, what they decided was that they would accept a certain, you know, accept certain principles to, to guide their decision-making processes, and, the result is that any district that did not submit a, a Section 9 alternative governance proposal would be forced into merger. So there are some, some districts that voted against merger, but never submitted a alternative governance proposal, including Orwell and Huntington, which voted many times against merger, but because they didn't submit a Section 9 proposal, at least according to the principles that the State Board of Education voted on today, they would be nevertheless forced into merger. If you, if you did not have a 706B committee, that is, the, the original study, the old study committee, in, in your area, then you would be forced into merger, if you didn't go through that work to decide whether or not... But if you did have the 706 committee and your district voted against, then they would accept that, and would not force a merger on those areas. And then, if you had a 706 committee but never had a, had a vote, because the 706 committee decided that a vote was not warranted or needed, for whatever reason, then they, they were going to have to talk about what to do with those specific districts. I know that the one right around Montpelier, Palace, that area, had a 706 study committee, went through the whole process, then decided that they did not want to merge, and did not even want to recommend a vote on merging. So anyway, it will be, it'll be really interesting seeing where you're from here, because it's obviously a split group, five to four vote, and what it all means, I, I don't know, but we'll find out, so. And what it does mean for this district is because we went through the, the 706B committee process, because we went through the voting process, because we submitted an alternative governance proposal, we sort of fit in all the categories, and in all likelihood... we sort of fit in all three categories, and in all likelihood, we can carry on with our, our alternative governance, you know, proposal that we set up, so that's good. Anything else in regards to this meeting, or the meeting last, a couple of weeks ago? Now we might want to approve the continuous improvement plan that we talked about for meetings on end. And now it is, after some discussion, it is generally a plan that would be more or less uniform across the SU with some specific things that are specific to individual towns, but I think, isn't that correct, Doug or Lynn, that it's, it's sort of uniform across the SU? Any discussion about this, the CIP plan?
Well, I did look at both of them again, the one that says that it's for, wouldn't want the Supervisory Union enlist Westminster as one of the schools, and looked at the one that Doug had developed before. And there's some detail in Westminster's that is not reflected here, and I, I guess I just wanted to check again to make sure that you're comfortable, or might we think about an approach where they're, where they're integrated? Where the detail that Doug had over here could be appropriately incorporated into the SU plan? Is it a question?
I think you'll, you'll, you, you know, you'll see more details in any of the...
Any of the local?
In the district plans, but they do, you know, directly correlate to a more broad statement in the SU plan. Like that, the, the area, I'm sure if you look at the areas that are very more specific to the school, that they would fit under one of the umbrellas that you see in the SU plan. They're just not as specific, they're just more broad. So it says, you know, so you can be as, you know, more specific, as long as it fits under the umbrellas of the SU plan.
And what we, assuming we have a motion and approved the, the CIP plan, we're approving it for our district. Is that, that's correct?
Yes.
We know we're not approving it for the Supervisory Union.
We're having each district approve the SU plan as their, their plan as they move forward with the specifics fall onto the umbrella of the general areas of the S U S SIP plan.
But the version that we're approving, or we would have a vote to approve tonight, is the one that came from the Supervisory Union?
Correct.
But that doesn't discount this, and that doesn't in any way limit what the school district chooses to do to, especially with cause analysis and, and their gaps. It doesn't really change anything, it's just that the, the main SIP for the SU just falls in much more succinctly with the CFG grants, the consolidated grants. And so when we do Title Four, which is the whole district, and when we do Title One and we break up pieces, everything has to be related back to the SIP, and we can't relate, you know, I, I can't put in, you know, people to, to work in Westminster Central, Central, Center School under one SIP, and then use some other people in another school under another SIP, or, you know, outstanding, um, outstanding instruction, or improving learning, professional development. I, we, the most, the most efficient and effective way is to have one SIP and relate all of these, um, these investments that we put in the consolidated federal grant under one SIP. And that's particularly why we ju, we need one SIP, it just simplifies everything. And that, that SIP at the SU does not in any way negate the SIP that this district has developed with Doug and his committee. It, it doesn't negate anything, and it, it's like Chris says, it's just an umbrella that is affecting the whole district.
These schools still use their individual SIPs to drive the decisions in regards to spending the grant money.
As, as Chris mentioned too, when he, at Green Mountain, when the State Board of Education was asking about our alternative governance, one of the things that we're saying in, in, you know, see, we're not voting to consolidate, but we are consolidating certain pieces of what we do so that the equity in what we do is across all of our districts, and that will be...
So more efficient when it comes to applying for the grants.
Right, yes, big, big time.
Doug, do you have anything to add? Um, is there a motion?
Yeah, I'm, I'm moved that we approve the Wind of Northeast Supervisory Union Continuous Improvement Plan with the understanding that that plan is an umbrella and does not negate the individual CIP that our school also has.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? That was a while, come... All right, and do we have any appointments or reservations?
Have any, no?
Directors come in? Director come in?
I debated saying anything, I just want to applaud our neighboring SU, Supervisory Union, in their recent move at the middle school and high school level to fund all food services for all children, under the belief that a well-fed student does better in school. So they, no longer, nobody pays for school lunch, because they find that that group above the Free and Reduced have just as much trouble figuring out how to fund their, their kids' lunches. So anyway, I think that was a good thing, be a lofty goal for all schools in the future.
Tim, Cheryl?
I think I want to suggest maybe that the Community Education Support Committee will work with, with Doug and community members to figure out a plan for the dedication of the Bed Major program. It's a suggestion.
Well, to that, Doug, you and I will have to get together as far as talking about that. Doug did put out that maybe we know somebody that can help well, to help put something on volleyball so they can be volley, volley...
Yeah, Pat's just having trouble moving the standards around, so like, instead of buying you one, she was just like, I don't know, like, I was, feel like there's got to be a list in there, some, one of those people must know how to weld.
I know a couple welders right in town here, have kids in school, so.
And I apologize for missing the budget meeting, I couldn't miss the thing, and I didn't have it on my calendar, so. Be around for the next one.
I have to apologize for missing a ton of meetings, I had a really good summer traveling.
Excellent.
It was away, and then a couple were scheduled for the, the holidays, and that's, I couldn't have had, so, I'm back.
Great. Happy to have you back. Okay, um, the agenda items for the next board meeting, does anyone have anything? That they care to put on the next board meeting right now?
Can we get, um, maintenance, you know, grounds kind of on there as far as what's been done, what we need to do, especially coming up on budget season? I'm going to start thinking about that, because I know that, that was a big budget concern, you know, looking at the maintenance costs, so. And then I had, I met some people at the Bike Project, I think it'd be a car or something, they said they'd go, they said that they've spoken with some people from Westminster Board, and they were very interested in getting, it's a local group that has some qualitative youth, and they'd like to speak with our board. So at some point, I think we should invite them. Anyway, I'll find the card for you, David.
Yeah, I, I think I actually had a conversation with them.
Right, so I met them, they gave me the card, they said they're still very interested in speaking about possibilities and use involvement to the more local level, so.
Cool, okay. That brings us on to date of next meeting. The, the usual meeting would be two weeks from now, and the next meeting after that, we already decided, will be November sixth. Will we have things to talk about two weeks from now? Is there a need to meet two weeks from now?
I don't think so.
Okay, so Cheryl?
If we don't, if we don't meet, I would just make sure that we have all the communications channels know that there won't be a meeting on...
Gotcha. We need on the third.
Exactly. Community members and others might really fully expect there will be a meeting, and make it big and bold that the next meeting will be November sixth.
Yeah. Can you, can you put that on your list?
Hey, I consider it a challenge.
A challenge you accept.
Because, Chris, we were thinking that there may not be a reason for a meeting in just two weeks from now, which is where our normal Thursday, Tuesday of the month board meeting would be, and instead we'd meet November sixth.
Okay.
And, and does that make sense to you? Do you have a...
Yeah, I can anticipate anything, I mean, we'll be spending a lot of, you know, united on the budget and stuff, so it makes sense.
Okay, great, so...
Give the name of this, just so we have it clear. The Greater Falls Connections is the person who reached out and said they'd like to get involved with our board, and their, their mission is to connect the community of Windham to abuse by inspiring and empowering people through education and collaboration to promote wellness and prevent abuse of alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs.
And that, and that's a group that we're working with, SUI, so, I mean, we meet with them regularly, and we have another meeting coming up to establish, you know, guidelines and rules of operation and stuff like that, so.
Would you just ask to come and meet our board?
Would you like that on the next agenda?
Sure.
Greater Falls Community?
Connections.
Connections, Greater Falls Connections. I can invite them if you would like.
Why, that'd be great.
The next, November sixth at six thirty, not five thirty, because we're doing budget first. I will invite them, and that will be on the next agenda.
So did we decide, I mean, I'm happy not having a budget meeting November sixth, but is that...
No, we are having one.
You don't have any more?
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, um, unless there are any other items, I will declare the meeting adjourned.